Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the monthly meeting of Wycomico County Board of Education. Today's meeting is being livestreamed and videotaped. The videos are available for viewing at WCBOE.org. As we always do, we begin with the Pledge to the Flag led by one of our students from West Salisbury Elementary School, a second grader, Kayden Morton will lead us. And we'll have some recognition after the pledge. Kayden, the floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Kayden, do you mind standing up just one more time? I have to say, we've been doing this awhile and that was probably one of the strongest performances that we have had of the Pledge of Allegiance in quite some time. So, thank you very much. And I have a certificate of appreciation to present you with and also an American flag with some pencils from the Board of Education. So, thank you so much. And Kayden, do you have anybody with you today that you'd like to introduce that came along to see you?
My mom, my grandma, and my pop-pop. And my principal.
Great, thank you very much. We give him a hand, thank you.
Very good, thank you Kayden. So, 3.2, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of an approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. 3.3, reorganization of the board. I'll turn that over to Superintendent Dr. Micah Stoffer.
Thank you Chairman Malone. Section 3, 13A-06 of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires the Board of Education to reorganize at the first meeting in December of each year. Superintendent, I will assume the chair for just this portion of the agenda. So, at this point, the Board of Education will now accept nominations for the position of chairman of the Wycomico County Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jeanne Malone.
Okay, Jeanne Malone has been nominated as chairman. Do you accept that nomination, Mr. Malone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I'd nominate John Palmer.
Okay, Mr. Palmer has been nominated for chairman of the Board of Education. Do you accept that nomination, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. I'll close the nominations. And at this point, all in favor of Mr. Jeanne Malone for board chairman, please raise your hand. Okay, I have Mr. Plots, Mr. Brown, Mr. Malone, and Dr. Ennis. For the record, that is the majority of the board at this point. Congratulations Chairman Malone.
Thank you.
All right, the Board of Education will now accept nominations for the position of vice chairman of the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Thank you.
Congratulations Chairman Brown.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And at this point, I will turn the remainder of the meeting over to you, sir. Are there any nominations for vice chairman?
I'd like to nominate Mr.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer.
Brown.
So, 3.4 is a moment of silence.
Mr. Brown, do you accept that nomination?
Since our last meeting in November, we've lost three colleagues or former colleagues.
I accept.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Ennis, Dr. Ennis.
Okay, Dr. Ennis, do you accept that nomination?
Dan Wood B. Bloodsworth, principal supervisor with this system for over 16 years of service, worked
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any nomination, other nominations for vice chair?
at Fruitland and Prince Street Elementary.
I'd like to nominate John Palmer.
Okay, Mr.
Brenda Carey was a bookkeeper, 22 years of service, works at Parkside High and Wycomico
Palmer, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
High. And I would also say, mother-in-law to our IT Director, Mr.
Okay, at this point, I have a nomination for Mr.
Langen, apology, we're sorry for your loss, sir.
Brown for vice chair and I have a nomination for Mr.
And Mr.
Palmer for vice chair.
Cortland Lilly's been a teacher for 36 years of service, worked at James &amp; Bennett High
All in favor of Mr. Brown for vice chairman of the Board of Education, please raise your hand.
School. So, as is typical, could we bow our heads and have a moment of silence for these individuals?
Dr. Ennis, Mr. Malone, Mr. Brown, Mr. Plots, that's four votes, majority of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Brown, vice chairman of the Board of Education.
3.5, recognition of students for designing the 2022 holiday cards.
Thank you. Do we switch seats?
So, I'd turn that over to you, Dr. Stoffer.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Dr. Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman Malone, board members, and members of the audience that are here Ennis and Mr. Brown to switch seats. today. I want to start by saying I am very pleased to have the boardroom decorated with a number of beautiful points. That is from our Parkside CTE department at Parkside. While they are already sold out this year, sorry about that, we are excited to at least be able to borrow a few that are around us for today. So, we just appreciate the great work that Parkside CTE, the horticulture program under the direction of Mr. Kelly and all that they do each and every year, especially around this time of year. So, one of the many tasks that a lot of us have during the holiday season is choosing the right Christmas cards to send out, holiday cards to send out for our families. And this has had to be one of the toughest tasks that I've had so far as a new superintendent, but also one of the most enjoyable as well. And I would say that we had many, many wonderful designs. Students in art classes and programs at each of our high schools were able to submit card designs illustrating what makes this time of year so very special. The message that you can see inside each card is the one that's on the screen now, but there are four different designs that will be on the front of the cards. And I met with Supervisor of Fine Arts, Dr. Jeff Bear, and our Public Information Officer, Tracy Saylor, right after Thanksgiving to review the submissions and fulfill the very challenging task of picking just one design for each of our high schools among all the many talented submissions that we have. So, I am excited to recognize the work that these student artists did and to share with you their wonderful artwork which will represent Wycomico County Public Schools and the Wycomico County Board of Education. So, as I call your name, please come forward to receive a packet of the holiday card designs with your design. And if the student art teachers are here, I would invite them up with their students as well so that at the end, we can have one big group picture for all of those that are recognized. So, I'm going to move around the front of the desk to do this next portion. So, the students that were chosen, one from each high school, they will get and receive, actually what we did is we took their design and then printed the design on a card that will represent Wycomico County Public Schools and Wycomico County Board of Education with the message inside for all of our schools and our community partners that will receive these cards. But we printed these, actually 10 of them for each of the students for their designs that they could be able to show them off as well. So, it's my pleasure to first recognize Delaney Erp from James &amp; Bennett High School, teacher is Ms. Davis, and this is the winter cabin scene inside of a snow globe. Is Delaney here? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bear. You can see the beautiful design on the screen. The next one is from Mardella Middle and High School, teacher is Ms. Dean, and this is a child writing a message on a window while a cat is taking a nap nearby, and that's Hannah Wilkins from Mardella Middle and High School. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, just stay right there. Thank you. All right, we also have Parkside High, VPA teachers, Mr. Foltz, Ms. Choi, and Mr. Jones. And this is a deer that has fun with a string of holiday lights, and that is from Elia Frolock from Parkside High School. Is Elia here? Okay, all right, congratulations.
Still probably worthy of applause, right? We should have applauded for Ms. Erp too, right? Very good, thank you.
All right, and last but not least, from Wycomico High School, VPA teachers, Ms. Choi, Mr. Foltz, and Mr. Jones. This is a cozy indoor scene with a warm beverage and a time to relax on a sofa during the holidays. And that is from Wycomico High School, Maria Hernandez. Congratulations. Great job, Maria. Thank you so much. All right, Saylor's going to come over. How you doing, Dr. Blake?
Yes. And if you can hold your cards in the sale. And you want to grab the other two sets of cards? Just hold them.
Thank you all again. Great work. First is from Parkside High School and seated at the board table today, Daphne Minn. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Stoffer and members of the board. I would like to begin this report by recognizing Casey Wilson, who was named 2022 Bayside South Girls Soccer Player of the Year, and Hannah Mezek, who was October's Farmers Bank of Willards Scholars Athlete Award recipient. We're very proud of both of them. Parkside was able to start off a very successful Winter Spirit Week with yesterday's Ugly Sweater Festival and today's Tree Topper Tuesday. Wednesday is Winter Wonderland Pyjama Day, wear your best and most wintery pajamas. Thursday will be home for the holidays, wearing Parkside gear to show support for our basketball games that day. And Friday is Grinch Green Out versus Frosty White Out, dressed in either green, all green or all white. We also had our annual Christmas tree auction. Eleven different groups consisting of staff, students, and alumni designed miniature holiday trees that could be bid on in the auction. Every penny raised was donated to the Bless Our Children campaign. Our fine art programs have had a very busy start to the holidays. The Parkside Players put on a fantastic two-act comedy on Saturday, December 10th called Cooking Can Be Murder. Five members of the Parkside Symphonic Band participated in the 39th Annual Towson University Honor Band. Chloe Asher, Alex Payden, David Kim, Brody Diamond, and Monica Resarrios. They auditioned and qualified to be in the highest-grade Tiger Band, putting on an amazing performance only 12 hours later. The band also had their first indoor Drumline Interest Meeting/Practice on December 10th. And the band, choir, and orchestra will all be having their winter concerts this week to end the season. Parkside's athletics have also had a strong start to their winter season. Six of our Parkside seniors had a chance to play in the 2022 Eastern Shore Senior Bowl Game, and our very own Coach Riley was asked to be the head coach for the North Bayside team. And the 53rd Annual Holiday Wrestling Tournament will be held this weekend at Parkside. Fifteen teams from Maryland, Delaware, Virginia, and Pennsylvania will be participating. Many of our other clubs have also had busy schedules. Nineteen members of Parkside Stock Market Club traveled to the Purdue School of Business Salisbury University to participate in a stock market game and learn about financial literacy. The DeMarva Vex Robotics Team started their competition with a spin-up challenge in November in Wilmington, Delaware, and one of our teams placed fifth with students from both James &amp; Bennett and Parkside. Parkside's Leo Club has also had several successful community service projects over the last few months, and most recently participated in the J.C.'s Walmart Shopping Project where members were assigned a child and $100 to walk throughout Walmart and help choose gifts for the child and their families. This weekend, the Leo Club will be going on their annual trip to Arlington Cemetery to participate in Reeds Across America, where they will partake in putting wreaths on and honoring the graves of past veterans. The Leo Club will also be taking part in the Santa's Angels Program on December 23rd and 24th, helping to pack and distribute bags of Christmas gifts and meals to families in need. Parkside is planning to have an AP and Dual Enrollment Information Night in January to improve participation in such programs. We've also most recently created a kindness wall, where positive post-it notes can be left and taken by both students and staff to spread a little holiday cheer. This is all from my report this month. Thank you very much for listening and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. It's okay to applaud. Okay, from James &amp; Bennett High School, Kara Lewis. Welcome Kara.
Test, okay. Good afternoon Superintendent Stoffer and fellow board members. First, I would like to welcome the new members and reintroduce myself. My name is Kara Lewis, I represent Bennett High School. I look forward to meeting you all and working with you throughout the year. The last month has been packed with events and plans to conclude this calendar year before our much-needed break, and we're ready to hit the ground running when we come back. For each day in December, students and staff collaborated to make themed days and events for the 12 School Days of Christmas leading up to winter break. Winter sports are officially underway, and all four of us presidents have started speaking to hopefully collaborate on a countywide Winter Spirit Week in January or February. At the Salisbury Christmas Parade, the J&amp;B Band, Color Guard, and Cheerleaders won Best School Marching Band in Color Guard, which we were very proud of. Our school had a career week where staff helped people with resumes, and seniors and freshmen got to hear Jay Copeland speak in the auditorium about his experiences post-graduation. Being able to have conversations with and ask questions to J&amp;B alumni now out in the real world is truly valuable. This Friday, J&amp;B is holding our holiday concert during Flex where the band, orchestra, and chorus will perform. Flex classes that have gone above and beyond in their usage of the time and some students will attend in person, but the concert will be livestreamed to the entire school to celebrate the end of 2022. We have also implemented school events that give back to the community and aren't just merely for fun or for fundraising. The SGA classes, along with other clubs and groups, each decorated Christmas trees to not only add festivity to the school, but to later donate them to families without them. The Leo Club hosted a gingerbread house-making contest that 23 clubs and groups of students participated in, and all the money we made is being donated to the Leader Dog Association to help visually impaired people afford seeing eye dogs. Leo Club is also preparing for their winter trip to Arlington, collaborating with Parkside's, and there we will lay wreaths for fallen veterans and their families who may be buried there. The SGA, as always, is working to get more students involved at school. We're making plans to re-advertise club tables in the new year, and we're also in the process of getting more solid student feedback on the school and county school system as a whole. I represent not just what the students at J&amp;B do, but what we think. So, expect to hear a lot more about both student events and our feedback in the coming months. Enjoy your holidays and the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you Kara. For Wycomico High School, Julia Matthews is under the weather today, and filling in for her is Maruk Rizwan. Welcome.
Thank you. And good afternoon to board members and guests. My name is Maruk Rizwan, and as SGA Executive First Vice President at Wycomico High School, I am honored to be the student representative at this meeting as I share WyHigh's most recent accomplishments. The winter sports season is off to a wonderful start. Our basketball teams have started off their season strong with our boys team winning their first two games and our girls team winning against Mardella High. At the tournament over this past weekend, wrestling had three top finishes. The track team has started with a bang. We look forward to watching our teams grow and continue to play their best. To enhance the Christmas spirit, our principal, Dr. Blake, created five days till winter break Spirit Week. The Spirit Week includes I'm Dreaming of a White Christmas, Flannel Day, Tis the Season, Wear Your Red and White, PJ Day, and Tacky Not Classy Christmas Sweater Day. If you enjoy Christmas music as much as we do, please join us on Thursday for our annual combined concert featuring our band, orchestra, and chorus. Continuing with our more annual traditions, our teachers and faculty have been working on their recyclable holiday door decorations, and they look amazing. Although winter break begins after Friday, the National Honor Society will continue to meet and serve our community. We are excited to continue traditions like bell ringing outside of the North Salisbury Walmart and the Angel Tree Project, where WyHigh's NHS alum can join us over their holiday breaks. This past Saturday, we had the opportunity to create a new tradition, joining the J.C.'s Foundation at Walmart to shop for Christmas gifts for children and their families. We are ecstatic to start new things and continue those from the past while bringing our best holiday cheer. WyHigh is looking forward to coming back from the break and continuing to achieve amazing things. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to sharing our next accomplishments with you at the next meeting. Have an amazing break and a happy holidays.
Thank you. And from Mardella High School, Naya Matthews. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Stoffer, members of the board, and congratulations and welcome to the newly-elected board members. I want to start off today's report by urging the board, as well as the new members, to take action. Recently at Mardella, there was an incident involving a racist interaction committed by one of our students through social media. When students tried to take action and made reports on said incident, it took extraordinary efforts for any action to be taken on the student involved in these harmful doings because the incident took place outside of school. Due to the negative impact that it held on our students inside of school, I felt that swift action should have been able to take place rather than having to wait for a major disruption to take place inside of school. This creates confusion and hesitation of students when we try to do the things that we are told to do by reporting these incidents to the adults in the building. Based on the way the Code of Conduct is currently written, a student cannot be suspended for making others feel unsafe emotionally or mentally. They can only be suspended for directly affecting the physical safety of others. When speaking with the other SGA presidents, they also mentioned that there are plenty of negative racial interactions that take place at their schools with little being done after being reported. As a student leader and representative of my school, as well as a biracial student, I urged the board to consider increasing the consequences in the Code of Conduct so that the repercussions for these actions are more severe. I'm advocating for a revision of the Code of Conduct in which the definition of safety is modified, or for there to be an inclusion about hate speech, therefore resulting in a suspension for these kinds of acts. Creating rules that carry more weight to consequences for circumstances that create an unsafe and uncomfortable environment, such as racism, is imperative to creating a safe learning environment for our students. On a more positive note, yesterday, Mardella kicked off our Holiday Spirit Week. Yesterday was Polar Express Day. Students came to school dressed in PJs and received a free cup of hot chocolate courtesy of the SGA. Today is Holiday Dinner Party. Students came dressed in their best outfits as if they were attending a fancy holiday dinner party. They can also stop by the SGA table at lunch to create a holiday card to be delivered to a person of their choosing on Friday. We enjoyed seeing all the little middle schoolers write anonymous crush notes to their crushes. Later this week, we have Winter Gear Wednesday, Shine Bright Thursday, where students will wear lights to school, and Ugly Sweater Day. Students who do not have an ugly sweater can stop by the SGA table where we will have materials to create their own ugly sweater. Yesterday, our Junior Honor Society stayed after school to wrap presents for families adopted by a local church. Tomorrow, our National Honor Society will be wrapping a total of 67 gifts for Santa's Angels. Our teachers and staff have been participating in a 12 Days Till the Holidays drawing where the drawing members get to poke a hole through wrapped cups which inside have pieces of paper that then, that they will receive as a prize. These gifts range from donated gift cards to personalized gear made by J9 Designs. Special shout-out to sophomore Ava Bear, who was selected to represent Mardella in the All-State Choir. Ava was one of only four people on the entire Eastern Shore to be selected. And for another special shout-out, Mardella had a student that was one of two students in the county, chosen to represent the county and state as a Maryland Senate page, where they received the opportunity to act as an intern at the Maryland State House for one week and learn more about leadership in the government. That student was myself. And the second one was her. Our musicians at Mardella have also had an outstanding holiday season. Our band placed second in both the Pokomoke and Cambridge Parades and improved their scores from last year in both parades. Our middle school and high school bands, choirs, and orchestra also performed a joint winter concert on Thursday and Friday night. The support was so tremendous that both events ended in having only standing room left in our cafeteria. As amazing as it is to have such support, we can't wait to be able to provide seating for such large numbers with the creation of our new school. Welcome again, new electees, and happy holiday break to all.
Thank you, Naya. Thanks to all the student reps, and we'll take all those comments under advisement as a board. Thank you. 3.7 is a tribute to a retiring board member, Ms. Anne Suthausky. So, Ms. Suthausky is very active in the community, and today was her Christmas Bridge Club. So, she, we invited her today, and then we invited her in January, which is a night meeting, so she might not be able to attend. So, I promised her that I would read this today, which she's very deserving of this tribute, commit it to the minutes, and I would get it to her. And just a little about Ms. Anne, she went to high school with my parents, and so when she first got elected to the board, she and I had an interaction on the phone that wasn't, didn't go quite as well as we wanted, and she said, "I'm going to have to talk to your mother about your behavior." So, that'll tell you that I will definitely get this to her. So, whereas Anne B. Suthausky has served the Wycomico County Board of Education and Wycomico County Public Schools since 2018, and whereas Ms. Suthausky has consistently supported the mission of the school system to provide all students an educational foundation and a set of skills which will enable them to become responsible and productive citizens in our society, has consistently been both an advocate for and role model of the importance of reading, learning, and of being an active, informed, and engaged board member, and has demonstrated a strong commitment to the students, families, and staff of Wycomico County Public Schools, as well as to Wycomico County and its residents, businesses, and communities, and whereas she has created relationships with many in the school system and community, including students, parents, and guardians, teachers, principals, staff, employee groups, and associations, and leaders and members of government, civic, business, and faith-based organizations, and public and higher education, has supported continuous improvement through each superintendent's strategic plan, has helped prepare Wycomico County Public Schools well for the blueprint for Maryland's future, has participated in and contributed to various committees and boards, including Career and Technical Education, CTE, Advisory Committee, Curriculum Council, and the Board Policy Review Committee, has represented the Board of Education and school system to local and state-elected officials, and at community and school system events, and much more. And whereas she fulfilled one of the greatest responsibilities of a board member by taking an active role in the school system's search for a new superintendent of schools in 2022, assisted in the improvements to areas outlined in each superintendent's strategic priorities to include implementing high-quality universal pre-kindergarten programs in all elementary schools with primary grades, recognizing and supporting the importance of kindergarten readiness, expanding education programs for middle schoolers with the ongoing technical education opportunities, working to ensure college and career readiness for all students, increasing dual enrollment and early college opportunities for students, enhancing the new teacher induction program in conjunction with the Board of Education and negotiation teams, assisting in negotiating the largest pay increase ever for employees in Wycomico County Public Schools to support recruiting and retaining a high-performing staff, providing leadership to encourage and support teachers to become nationally board-certified, ensuring a system-wide focus on school safety for all students and staff through policies and procedures that reinforce this goal, and whereas during her time on the board, Ms. Suthausky has supported each superintendent of schools in effectively and safely leading the school system, especially through the many challenges of a global pandemic, including the provision of effective virtual learning for all students, and the creation of the continuing option of the Blended Virtual Learning Program, supported increasing the technology footprint of the school system, and assisted in securing funding for a one-to-one device ratio for all students, been instrumental in supporting applications for various budgetary and financial awards, including the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials International Annual Awards, encouraged food services initiatives such as Maryland Meals for Achievement, Community Eligibility Program, and the Grab and Go Breakfast Program. And whereas she has been a strong supporter of school construction projects by advocating for capital funding for the Wycomico County Board of Education's Capital Improvement Program as needed. to include implementing high-quality, universal pre-kindergarten programs in all elementary schools with primary grades, recognizing and supporting the importance of kindergarten readiness, expanding education programs for middle schoolers with the ongoing technical education opportunities, working to ensure college and career readiness for all students, increasing dual enrollment and early college opportunities for students, enhancing the new teacher induction program in conjunction with the Board of Education negotiation teams, assisting in negotiating the largest pay increase ever for employees in Wycomico County Public Schools to support recruiting and retaining a high-performing staff, providing leadership to encourage and support teachers to become nationally board-certified, ensuring a system-wide focus on school safety for all students and staff through policies and procedures that reinforce this goal. And whereas during her time on the board, Ms. Suthausky has supported each superintendent of schools in effectively and safely leading the school system, especially through the many challenges of a global pandemic, including the provision of effective virtual learning for all students, and the creation of the continuing option of the Blended Virtual Learning Program, supported increasing the technology footprint of the school system and assisted in securing funding for a one-to-one device ratio for all students, been instrumental in supporting applications for various budgetary and financial awards, including the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials International Annual Awards, encouraged food services initiatives such as Maryland Meals for Achievement, Community Eligibility Program, and the Grab and Go Breakfast Program. And whereas she has been a strong supporter of school construction projects by advocating for capital funding for the Wycomico County Board of Education's Capital Improvement Program as needed, assisted with and supported the completion of Central Air and all WCPS schools, has willingly devoted her time and energy as a member of the board to the improvement of aging facilities through many renovations and construction projects involving every Wycomico County Public School, including major projects at Delmar Elementary School, Parkside High School, Shoemaker Complex, Wycomico County Stadium, Beaver Run Elementary School, the major renovation and additions now underway from Mardella Middle and High School, the expansion slash renovation of the central office, and the start of planning for a new Fruitland Primary School. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Wycomico County Board of Education express their appreciation to Ms. Ann B. Suthausky, whose expertise and passion for serving on the board included being a Wycomico student and graduate herself, as well as serving in the state of Delaware as a teacher for thirty-one years, with ten years as a reading, English, and journalism teacher, and twenty-one years as a secondary reading specialist. And be it further resolved that the members of the Wycomico County Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Wycomico County Public School System, publicly recognize and express their appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Suthausky for her contributions during her four years of service as a board member. And be it further resolved that a copy of this tribute to Ms. Ann B. Suthausky be spread upon the minutes of the Wycomico County Board of Education meeting this thirteenth day of December, 2022. To Ms. Ann, thank you. So three point eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Stauffer.
Thank you, Chairman Malone. I just want to take a moment on behalf of Wycomico County Public Schools, really to wish all students, staff, parents, board members, and our community members just a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year to everyone. It's really an honor to serve as your superintendent, and I do wish all of our community members and all of our staff and students and their parents and homes just a really wonderful holiday season. So I wanted to take that opportunity to extend that to everyone. And as we move forward with the superintendent's update, this particular meeting, where we have a number of things to report out to the community. We're gonna have an update on Blueprint in just a moment, as well as kindergarten readiness and early childhood education. We'll also talk about some extra award, extra mile award winners. We have a Golden Apple Award winner to review, and then also our monthly grant report as well. So a few things, but to get us started, I'm gonna invite Dr. Briggs, our chief academic officer. He's gonna be providing his monthly blueprint update and then introducing some staff to present some data and literacy information with our youngest learners as we move forward. So take it away, Dr. Briggs.
Thank you, Dr. Stauffer, and good afternoon to all board members, and a special welcome to those new to the board. I look forward to working with each of you as we work together for the success of all students across the district. As I've done the past several months, I'll be providing an update on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Because we have a few new board members, I will review some information shared previously and then provide an update on the timeline and next steps in our implementation process. In 2021, the Maryland State Legislature passed the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, legislation that codified the recommendations of the Maryland Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education, better known as the Kerwin Commission. Through these five pillars, the law aims to transform Maryland's public school system into a world-class education system by expanding early access to education, by remodeling teaching into a high-status profession and incentivize teachers to pursue professional development while maintaining focus on classroom instruction, enable most students to achieve college and career readiness by the end of tenth grade, broaden resources to ensure all students are successful, including students with disabilities, English learners, and students living in poverty, and create an accountability framework to evaluate compliance with Blueprint's mandates, determine the effectiveness of student learning, and identify areas where the state can support the local school system as they implement these programs. The Blueprint will be implemented over the next ten years, and Wycomico County Public School staff have been meeting over the past year to plan how the school system will meet these goals in a programmatically appropriate and fiscally responsible manner. After receiving feedback from various stakeholders across the state of Maryland, the AIB recently adopted the Comprehensive Plan to guide this important work. Although it had been officially approved, although it has been officially approved, the final document has not been posted to their website yet, but it should be early next week. Additionally, the AIB will provide each district with five bound copies, and I will work with Dr. Stauffer to ensure that the board has one available to them. Also approved at the AIB's December first meeting was the Implementation Plan Template that LEAs must complete and submit by March fifteenth, 2023. The one-hundred-page document contains a hundred and sixty-four questions, including narrative responses and both existing and projected data. Speaking of the March fifteenth deadline, our team is continuing to meet to review and draft potential responses, and we are planning to provide the board with an update on our draft plan during the February board meeting. In addition to our internal meetings, staff attends state-level information sessions and workshops and collaborate with our colleagues from across the state as we work together to unpack each of the implementation template questions to ensure we provide answers that will meet state reviewers' expectations and more importantly, be beneficial to the students and staff of Wycomico County. This afternoon, I want to share some specific information regarding Pillar One, Early Childhood Education. The Blueprint establishes a significant expansion of full, of free, full-day pre-kindergarten to low-income families so that all children can begin kindergarten-ready-to-learn. In just a few minutes, you'll be hearing more about kindergarten readiness here in Wycomico County. The Blueprint calls for pre-kindergarten to be free for all three- and four-year-olds whose parents meet income-eligibility requirements and to be available on a sliding scale to all other four-year-old students. To support this expansion, the Blueprint will provide funding to public and community-based early education programs that meet rigorous quality standards. The expansion will be an ongoing process. Reminder that the Blueprint is to be implemented over ten years as it requires adjustments to early education preparation programs, increased physical and staff capacity, and demonstrated quality and continuous improvement as measured by a quality rating system. To continue to dive, to continue to dive into early childhood education a little further, I've asked Melissa Eiler, our supervisor of early childhood, and Karen Hitch, our supervisor of assessment and accountability, to share information with you regarding the Kindergardenness, kindergarten readiness assessment, or what we commonly refer to as KRA.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Good afternoon, Dr. Stauffer and members of the board. As mentioned, continuous improvement for school readiness is measured by a quality rating system, the kindergarten readiness assessment, the KRA. We want to share with you in an information video which provides an overview of the KRA.
Kindergarten is an important new step for your child and your family. Kindergarten teaches your child the key foundational skills they need to be successful in school. As you prepare your child to start kindergarten, you may wonder, "Is my child ready? How do I know?" In addition to learning early math and literacy skills, children learn to follow directions, rules, and routines in kindergarten. They learn to solve problems and work through tasks, even if the tasks are difficult. Children also begin to understand and express their own feelings and emotions, as well as the feelings and emotions of others. Kindergarten readiness, sometimes called school readiness, describes essential knowledge and skills they need before they start kindergarten. The knowledge and skills are related to different areas of child development, called domains, which include: language and literacy, mathematics, social foundations, such as social and emotional development, and how a child learns, and physical well-being and motor development. At the start of the kindergarten year, teachers use the kindergarten readiness assessment to get to know your child's skills and abilities in these four domains. Once teachers gather information, they review and use the information to plan educational activities that are at a level your child can understand and learn from. The kindergarten readiness assessment is for all Maryland children enrolled in kindergarten in public school. Teachers may begin using this assessment as soon as the school year starts, and they have until October tenth to complete it. On the kindergarten readiness assessment, the teacher can use three ways to determine your child's knowledge and skills. They can, one, ask them to select an answer to a question. Two, ask them to perform a requested task. Three, observe them during school or at recess. Because the observation is over the natural course of the school day, it is likely your child won't even notice. Once the assessment is complete, the teacher will share information with you about your child. This information will help you work with your teacher so that your child is successful in school. You will get a report that has your child's results. The first page of the report provides some general information about the kindergarten readiness assessment, including what it is, how it is given, what the results mean, and how it is scored. The second page contains your child's information. You will see their overall score, which determines their performance level for the assessment. These levels, demonstrating, approaching, or emerging readiness, describe how your child performs based on Maryland's pre-kindergarten standards. If your child's score is between two-hundred-two and two-hundred-fifty-seven, your child performed at an emerging readiness level, which means they demonstrated minimal foundational skills and behaviors during the assessment. A score between two-hundred-fifty-eight and two-hundred-sixty-nine is the approaching readiness level, which means that your child demonstrated some foundational skills and behaviors during the assessment. Finally, a score of two-hundred-seventy to two-hundred-ninety-eight means that your child is demonstrating readiness and showed all necessary foundational skills and behaviors during the assessment. On the middle of your child's score page, you will see four purple bars. Each bar contains your child's score for one of the four domains: language and literacy, mathematics, social foundations, and physical well-being and motor development. Within each domain bar, you'll also see dotted lines around the score. They show the best estimate of where your child's performance would be if your child were assessed multiple times. A statistical measure, called the standard error of measurement, was used to determine where these dotted lines are placed on the bars. The bar for the physical well-being and motor development domain is not as long as the others because there are fewer assessment items in that domain. The highest possible score children can receive on that domain is slightly lower than in the other domains. The domain scores help show you which of your child's skills and abilities are stronger. Don't be alarmed if your child is not excelling in every area. Most children develop in spurts. Your child may be ahead of peers in some areas and behind in others. This assessment is not designed to compare your child to others. It is used to share your child's readiness, skills, and abilities with the school at the start of kindergarten so they can best meet your child's needs. All students need support in some areas. On the bottom of the score page is the completion status. There will be an X in the box that describes whether your child was assessed on all of the items, some of the items, or none of the items. There may be instances where a child is not able to complete one or more items, and the item is marked "not scorable." If your child was given a score of "not scorable" for any of the assessment items, you'll see an X next to "complete with not scorable." Your child's kindergarten teacher can share more information about the not scorable items if they apply to your child. The last two pages of the report provide ideas for activities that you can do with your child at home to build the skills that will help them in school. As your child's first teacher, everything you do at home helps. Your child's kindergarten teacher will be glad to answer any questions you have about the kindergarten readiness assessment and how you can support your child's growth and development throughout the kindergarten year.
The four domains on the kindergarten readiness assessment, social foundations, physical well-being, language and literacy, and mathematics, include the foundational skills that you can review on this slide. I'm glad that was a reading slide. The performance levels. Students can score demonstrating readiness, approaching readiness, and emerging readiness. In Wycomico County, of course, we want the majority of our students, all of our students, demonstrating readiness. They will be the most prepared for kindergarten and for future grades.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As you can see here, student reports are available in multiple languages. We can provide them for students in English, Haitian Creole, Spanish, and Japanese. It's important to note that teachers actually in this platform receive data on their students as soon as the student completes the assessment, so they are able to make instructional decisions immediately based on the child's results. At the admin level, there's multiple reports available on the platform that allow them to dive deeper into the data at the school level, to talk during ILT meetings and PLCs, again, to drive instructional decisions based on the student results. In addition to this, these reports went home to all of our students' families between November first and fourth at all of our schools that had kindergarten students. We also offered a parent workshop on November tenth. It was a virtual opportunity where any parent could participate and learn more about their students' results in analyzing the report that we had just sent home. Last week, during the state board meeting, KRA results were shared, and as you can see here, they scored at forty-two percent, with the percent of students demonstrating readiness. That's up two percent from last year, but still below where they were as a state prior to the pandemic. Looking at Wycomico's results, I'm very pleased to share that we actually increased four percent from last year. As you can see, we're at thirty-seven percent. And again, that's the percentage of students that were demonstrating readiness for the kindergarten instruction. You can see here that there is not data for the twenty or twenty-one school year, the same true of Maryland, and that's because we did not administer the assessment due to the pandemic. Knowing that we have made opportunities for our pre-K students, that we have increased these opportunities over the last few years and will continue to do so as a requirement of the Maryland Blueprint, I wanted to share with you what it looked like when we separated out our students participating in our pre-K program versus students participating in pre-K programs from alternate settings or home care. As you can see here, forty-eight percent of our students participating in our pre-K instructional programs demonstrated readiness on the assessment, which was above the state average. The last thing I wanted to share with you today is that as the school level, as we dive deeper into that data and begin to look at domain performance, when we look at Wycomico as a whole, we saw that there was a marginal increase in social foundations and physical well-being and motor development for our students, and that the overall scale score was in line with the student's performance on both ELA and math. These conversations are happening at the school level frequently, looking at the trends in this data with the support of Mrs. Eiler and her early childhood team.
So now that the scores have been released, we are moving forward. Pre-K administrators were invited to a KRA data analysis meeting led by John Hopkins University. Pre-K and kindergarten teachers have received hourly stipends to work after hours during PLC times to analyze the KRA data together through vertical planning. The supervisor and professional development coaches in early childhood will provide professional development training for childcare providers on Saturdays through winter and spring. Articulation meetings between private providers and public schools are scheduled for May. Early learning assessment, an assessment given in pre-kindergarten three and pre-kindergarten four, is now aligned
IV, is now aligned to kindergarten readiness assessment standards. It is used to monitor progress toward kindergarten readiness. This assessment is shared with families now during Terms I, III, and IV. Judy Center Childcare Partners and the four pre-K expansion childcare partners are trained in and using Frog Street and Connect for Learning curriculums. They are now aligned to Wycomico's curriculums in the early years. And then, per MSDE, all LEA assessment and accountability offices will now fully oversee kindergarten readiness assessment. This will ensure a consistent focus is given as we prepare for the high-level accountability and reporting attached to this annual assessment for all of our kindergarten students. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Can we ask questions?
Yep, go ahead.
So, how many parents do you participate in November 10th? I'm just curious. You had the Zoom or whatever.
We had a full screen on Zoom, but the numbers were lower than we did hope.
Okay. Curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a boatload of questions, but I'm not going to get into them right now.
Okay.
I'll write them down and send them out, but I do have a lot of concerns.
As always, any board member, follow-up, certainly during the presentations or afterwards, we can research that information and get those answers back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Briggs. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Communications, Mr. Paul Butler, who has some presentations of our Extra Mile Award winners for this month.
Welcome, new board members. Congratulations on your new positions. Okay, we're going to do our Extra Mile Awards for the month of November. Extra Mile goes out to folks who go above and beyond during their duty as an employee for Wycomico County Public Schools. Now, our first one is a young man I'm going to bring down, Mr. Calvin Burrell and Ms. Penny, if you'll come down, Principal Penny from North Salisbury. And I understand that the students at North Salisbury are watching this ceremony as we're speaking, so you're under the spotlight, Mr. Burrell. All right. So Calvin Burrell can arguably be called the MVP of North Salisbury Elementary School. He wears many hats. Mr. Burrell not only is assigned to math classes in fourth and fifth grade, he is also North's PBIS chairperson, runs monthly and quarterly incentives such as bingo and bowling. He also works with the school's Maryland Food Bank, is the advisor for the TV studio productions, and is in charge of producing North Salisbury School's yearbook each year. More importantly, though, Mr. Burrell, his presence and relationship with students and staff is unmatched, right? He's an outstanding colleague, a mentor, and role model to both staff and students. When you need to lead a task or positively influence the school culture at North Salisbury, all 84 staff members and 506 families think of Calvin Burrell. He is an all-around positive change-maker for our school, our families, and our children. I know I'm making him uncomfortable right now. Ms. Burrell's been at North Salisbury for 18 years, spreading kindness and encouraging a positive culture, and he is one of our November Extra Mile Award winners for Wycomico Public Schools, so let's give Calvin a big hand. We have some gifts for you, sir. Here's one. That is a plaque. And we also have a certificate, which is signed by Dr. Stauffer and also Chairman Malone. And Tracy is going to take your picture. Ms. Penny, you can jump on either side. Now, Calvin, don't move. Many of you may not know, but Mr. Burrell is retiring at the end of this week. Yes, he's leaving us, so we are certainly going to miss him, and just want to say thank you very much for your years of service. Let's give Calvin Burrell another big round of applause. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Okay, our next Extra Mile Award winners is a team from the Facilities Department. So Mr. Hayes and Mr. Oji, if you guys will come on down. And also, come on down, Bob. All right, so let's talk about these gentlemen. If you Google the word "team," you're going to see their picture beside that word, okay? The word "team." Mr. Hayes and Mr. Oji should be right there in that description of the word "team." These two men are the painting team in the Facilities Department for Wycomico County Public Schools, and they've taken school painting to a new level. On their own, they produce the artwork to add school colors and some needed character to our buildings, specifically highly-traveled corridors. Their recent work can be found in the halls of Pinehurst Elementary, Wycomico High School, and Parkside High School. The school's administration, staff, and students are amazed at how just the painting of these walls has tied the building to the school spirit while giving a brighter new look. At Parkside, they work with the art teachers to let the students design and paint a ram's head in the space provided. Now, this gives students pride in their school project and also their school knowing they had an opportunity to be involved with the project. Now, keep in mind, the artistic paint schemes were from these two gentlemen at the schools. Now, to add to why these two staff members should be Extra Mile Award winners, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Oji worked flawlessly doing extra painting projects along with their normal workload of work orders that are generated daily, and as far as we know, they never complained. So we love them about that. For that, Dave Hayes and Exius Oji are two of our Extra Mile Award winners for going above and beyond during the month of November, so congratulations, gentlemen. Never seen a clean uniform for them, huh? Okay. Tracy's going to take your picture. I'm going to get out of the way. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for going above and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, and we are going to move now into another special award called the Golden Apple Award. These are, this is handed out very seldom, but from time to time, I do have the honor of presenting the Golden Apple Award for really extraordinary acts of achievement by someone in our school system or in our community. So I'm very pleased to announce that today, we have a new Golden Apple honoree with us, and this time I'm excited to say that it's a student. And I'm going to ask LaPrentice Doughty to come forward, along with any guests that may be with him today. Please come on down. All right. So LaPrentice is a sixth grader at Salisbury Middle School, and his former schools are North Salisbury and West Salisbury and Beaver Run, and they're also very, very proud. And I believe he has his mom with him today, Ms. Doughty, and also his little sister. And I want to say that this is a very special award because Mom, before Thanksgiving, had to go to the store, I believe, and had to leave the house for just a few minutes, and there were some people with LaPrentice and his little sister. But during that time, LaPrentice awoke to what was a fire in his apartment that started in an outlet within the apartment. And he ran out of the apartment to safety, but immediately ran back in when he realized his little sister loyalty was still inside. And in his own words, he shared with the Salisbury Independent, "I couldn't see, and there was so much smoke that I couldn't breathe, but I still continued to feel around for her until I found her." And he was able to grab loyalty and run back out of the house. And LaPrentice did receive some minor burns, but his little sister was completely unharmed. And though their home was gutted by this fire, thanks to LaPrentice, they all still have each other, and in addition, thanks to the extraordinary kindness from the community, they also have another apartment temporarily with furnishings as well as some donations through the GoFundMe account that was opened in their name. So LaPrentice recently received the Mayor's Award for the Citizen Service from the City of Salisbury for his quick thinking and bravery, and he also received recognition from the Salisbury Fire Department and the Governor's Office. And I know that there are some other community organizations that have or will be honoring LaPrentice because I'm going to some other events as well. But today, on behalf of Wycomico County Public Schools, I am pleased to present LaPrentice with the Golden Apple Award in recognition of his extraordinary bravery in saving his little sister's life from fire. And now, presented by our Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Dr. Brian Reger is going to give us our monthly grant report.
Good afternoon, Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Brown, and members of the board. I'm pleased to share updates this afternoon regarding our ongoing efforts to support our financial position through writing and acquiring grants. In October, we received four grants totaling $35,000. The Maryland Center for School Safety is providing $25,000 for a number of safety-related items or projects. Dick's Sporting Goods has granted Wycomico High School $6,000 to support their cheer program. The Community Foundation has granted $3,000 to Beaver Run Elementary School for a community outreach initiative. And finally, North Salisbury Grade Five teacher Nicole Hansen was awarded a grant from the Oak Ridge Institute for Science Education Lesson Plan Competition, in which she had to submit a STEM lesson plan. It was judged and awarded one of the winners. She will get $1,000 to support student engagement in science and STEM in her classroom, and notably, she's the third Wycomico science teacher to have won an Oak Ridge Institute competition over the past several years. November saw the submission of nine new grants totaling over $33,000, and I look forward to briefing you on their outcomes at a future meeting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reger, and I would just like to conclude my report by saying congratulations to you for continuing on as chairman, Mr. Malone.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Mr. Brown as our new vice chair, and I just want to wish all of our new board members that are coming on board the very best. I really look forward to working with you, Ms. Beecham, Mr. Plots, Dr. Ennis, and Ms. Hazel. Thank you all so much, and congratulations. We appreciate it and look for great things as we move forward. So that concludes our report. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stauffer. 4.1 approval of the open session minutes from the last meeting, which was November 15th. I assume you had time to read them, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Okay, the consent items comprise 5.1 to 5.6. So 5.7, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Okay, we have one action item, 6.1. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the pre-Labor Day and post-Labor Day WCPS school calendar for 2023 to 2024?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All right, so it looks like Mrs. Miles will discuss this.
Good afternoon. See if I can get the mic in the right spot, just a moment. Hello, Chair Malone and Vice Chair Brown, Dr. Stauffer, all board members, and special welcome to our newest members. It'd be a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you, Dr. Stauffer, for the opportunity to present for first reading approval our draft calendars for 2022, 2023. Even though January 2023 is not that far away, it seems like the school year of '23, '24 is quite a way down the road, but we're looking forward and trying to be well-prepared. You have two draft calendars. They are presented as by title, pre-Labor Day and post-Labor Day, perhaps not the most original titles, but that will help to distinguish them through the process. I would like to take just a moment to highlight a few of the similarities and differences between these two draft versions. As far as the first day for teachers in pre-Labor Day, that's August 21st; in post-Labor Day, August 23rd. As far as the first day for our students, pre-Labor Day, they begin August 28th; post-Labor Day, September 5th. In October, there is a day that shows a difference. It's October 19th on both calendars. It's a professional development day. On the pre-Labor Day draft, school is closed the full day for students. On the post-Labor Day draft, it is an early dismissal, which is agreed upon as a three-hour early dismissal, continuing what we are accustomed to this year. The Thanksgiving break and the winter break are the same on both drafts. End of term one, I did miss that one, my apologies, is November 7th, pre-Labor Day, early dismissal the following day on the 3rd. On post-Labor Day, that first term ends November the 7th, and that same day is an early dismissal day. Term two, little bit of a difference there. Pre-Labor Day ends September 25th, PD Day on the 26th. Post-Labor Day ends 26th, and a PD Day the 29th. And the best news is there's a quiz on this afterward. No quiz, and you don't have to memorize it. We'll have all of this up there for you. February PD Day on February 16th, little bit of a difference, full day of schools being closed for students, and an early dismissal on post-Labor Day. Getting closer to the end, there are only a few more lines. Spring break in pre-Labor Day is March 27 through April 1st, and in post-Labor Day is, double checking myself here, March, my apologies, 28, it was my typo on my own sheet, through the 1st. So there is a one-day difference there. Again, one starts the 27th, one starts the 28th. And then the end of the school year, which always seems to be an attention-getter for a lot of people, really only one-day difference, June 12th on pre-Labor Day and June 13th on post-Labor Day. So you may ask, well, where are the differences? And if you look on the color coding, you'll see green for a full-day closure for students. There are three such dates on pre-Labor Day. There is one identified full-day closure, other than the vacations on the post-Labor Day. So all of that said, remember, there's no quiz, and we'll have all of that information for you, guaranteed, but with your approval today for first reading as process, we will be able to post these calendars in English. calendars in English, in Spanish, and in Haitian Creole, along with a survey. This is a critical part of this entire process. The survey would also be posted in English, in Spanish, and in Haitian Creole. And it would be posted through the website, wcboe.org, and would be posted through January 4th and open to all persons to respond. Very brief, so we're not taxing anyone and trying to seek their input. We're going to ask for the respondent's email address, the role of the respondent, whether they are a parent guardian, a student, a school-based faculty or staff, central office staff or other, so obviously very broad-based, the preferred calendar choice, pre-Labor Day, post-Labor Day, and then equally, if not more important, an area for comments and suggestions. All the responses, once we have them closed on the end of the day on the 4th, will be compiled and will be provided back to you. Once they are provided to Dr. Stoffer, you'll be able to see what type of information came back to you as the approvers of the calendar and determine if we're ready to move forward with a final decision on the calendar in January or if there are revisions. And at this point, I would just say I appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity on this project, but also want to recognize that there are many people who are involved. And that's very important because we want all perspectives coming forward as we prepare what is the foundation for our school year in 2324, that being our school calendar. Be glad to answer any questions. And again, I am seeking approval for first reading, which would result in us being able to also, as of tomorrow, post the draft calendars and post the survey to begin seeking input from all stakeholders. Thank you for the opportunity.
Cam, I see in this one, as in some years past, we've had to add additional days in case of inclement weather, but I don't see that on this calendar. Is that because we're now able to go virtual or the state no longer requires that?
Well, on the lower right side of the calendar, just above the Wycomico County Public Schools logo, you will see on both post-Labor Day and pre-Labor Day, the inclement weather makeup days. We are required by Comar to provide three inclement, a minimum, pardon me, of three inclement weather makeup days prior to or inclusive of June 15th. We are able to do that in each of the calendars. As far as inclement weather and what a closure may be, with much appreciation to our board for approving earlier in the year our inclement weather or use of virtual days plan, I apologize, Dr. Briggs, for not having the exact title at the tip of my tongue, but hopefully we all know what I'm referring to. We do have an allowance of a number of days for virtual learning with a limitation on those days of the number of asynchronous days. Just like this year, we would plan, anticipate, to carry into next year the option that should there be a Delmarva snowstorm and we need to close schools, there may still be a traditional school closure. But we also reserve the opportunity to have such a day be an asynchronous learning day or a virtual learning day. And that's why it will be so important, you'll continue to hear students, always take your laptops home and always be prepared and those types of messages. But we will stay in accord with the plan that was approved by our board and submitted to the state board and approved as well. So I appreciate the question, Mr. Brown.
I have two questions. One is, is there a way for a parent or a community member to respond to this if they don't have a computer? I know we always get that question. There are those who can't go online, maybe don't have an email.
Certainly. We would always offer, if anyone would like to come to Northgate, or I would offer to be a point of contact should someone have that request, please feel free to call me, 410-677-4480, and I will assist in any way possible. I did leave out one important information point, and that being, I know there are a lot of people watching the board meeting, but just for those few who might not be tuning in right now, we will be sending out a message to all students, families, and staff to let them know, once we have your approval, that there will be a posted draft for pre and for post-Labor Day and a survey seeking their input. So the message will go out as soon as we're able to post and as well, over winter break, we don't want anyone to forget us, we'll be sending a reminder message as well.
Okay, that was my second question. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Ms. Miles, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to see if, is this going to be posted on the homepage? It's going to be easy for people to just click on right from, okay.
Yes.
And the other was for Facebook. Is somebody going to be putting some type of a link?
There will be a message out there with a link. I will just say right up front, you'll learn this about me quickly. I'm not the person who does that. We're all much safer that I'm not because I want the person who does it right to do that. With much appreciation to Tracy and to Paul for making that happen. I appreciate the question about the website. Anticipating, it will go in the banner section, so that first section that you see that will scroll every five or 10 seconds, and as well, a link farther down on the page. So thank you for asking about that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. 6.2 Personnel Matters is for information only. 7.1 Public Comment. As always, I read this statement about public comment. The public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the Superintendent and Board to listen to individuals' own comments on topics concerning Wycomico County Public Schools. The Board Chairman has the right to limit public comments in length or those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individual's appeals or legal matters that are before the Board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. Only verbal comments are permitted during public comment session of a board meeting. Written, printed, audio, or video material may be submitted via comments@wcboe.org. No signs or posters may be displayed by the public during board meetings. Each speaker shall address all comments directly to the Board and speak only from the designated location for public comments. And if you've been here before, which most people have, it's a three-minute limit, so we'll put the three minutes up there, and then I will give you a 30-second warning. We have eight signed up, but I think two aren't here, but I'm going to call their name just to make sure. Kimberly Groves here. Okay, how about Luke Angelot? I didn't see them, but I just don't want to leave them out. Okay? Then our first speaker will be Nicole Ackley. Topic is education. Welcome, Mrs. Ackley.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to the new and returning school board members. I had the opportunity to attend a CACAC meeting this past week, and if any of you are not aware of it, it's the Special Education Citizen Advisory Council. This is done once every three months. This is the first time I've been to this meeting in four or five years, and it was very sad to hear the same issues. Nothing has been resolved. But what was hopeful is the gentleman who was leading the group, Mr. Smith, was very receptive to what these parents were saying. He acknowledged it. He responded appropriately, and he did not dismiss them as an isolated incident. So that was really good to see. So now that I'm recently retired and I have the time, I'm committed to attend every disability and special education support group throughout this county and report back to you once a month on what I'm hearing from parents. You have a lot on your plate and a lot of different issues going, and so what I'm offering is support to you to make the best decisions possible. Thank you, Ms. Hazel, for attending the meeting. It was the first time I'd ever been to one where a school board member attended. I would encourage you all to attend or at least read the meeting minutes. It was very enlightening, that last one was. Just one other quick comment, when I was listening to the young lady speaking from Mardella regarding cyberbullying. There was a law passed in 2019. It's called Grace's Law 2.0, and this is, it carries a criminal offense of up to 10 years or $10,000 in penalties for anyone who cyberbullies and intimidates. I don't know if this particular student was aware of that, but that is already in place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackley. Our next speaker is Sandra Spedden, and the topic is general.
Okay. Thank you for your attention or your patience waiting for me to get here. I spoke, I think, a couple months ago was the last time I was here, and I was trying to give a history lesson of public education. How it started with, in this country, in the 1700s, earlier than that sometimes, with Christian parents who wanted their children to learn how to read the Bible. So they started these schools. Anyway, I'm not going to go through that whole thing again. But it was brought to my attention later that some of the students that were here found that quite amusing and funny and were laughing. And I'm sorry they felt that way because I have always been taught that if you don't learn from history, you're bound to repeat the same mistakes. So I feel sorry for them, really. I'm not upset with them, but it seems like maybe they have not been learning about how to respect other people and their opinions. And I think there's a lot of that today in this country, unfortunately. So I also wanted to bring to your attention that there's a man that I know well, and I've known him for probably 23 years, I believe. His name is E. Ray Moore, and he's out of South Carolina. He is an Army Reserve Chaplain and a veteran of the Gulf War, Gulf War I, where he was awarded the Bronze Star Medal. He's president of Frontline Ministries Incorporated, which is a Columbia, South Carolina-based ministry that focuses on prayer and revival as well as encouraging parents to remove their children from what he calls, quote, "Pharaoh's schools," end quote. I'm hoping it doesn't have to go that far, but I have learned a lot of things in the last few months coming to these meetings. And some of it's been shocking, and I hope it will change. So he is with the Frontline Ministries and Exodus Mandate. But I'm hoping that this board, which has a lot of new members on it now, will learn to listen to the public, to the parents, to the taxpayers, and try to do what they want because these are their children, not yours. And we need to do what's best for them and make sure they get a good education, which, according to statistics today, this country has fallen way behind a lot of other countries. I find that very sad, and I'd like to see some things in Wycomico County change. So, you going to tell me 30 seconds?
No, to tell you time. I went longer because it started later, so I went longer anyway, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much for letting me speak my mind.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bev Urick. The topic is good news.
Good afternoon. For the new members who may not know me, I'm Bev Urick, and I'm the President of Wycomico Retired School Personnel Association. And on behalf of the organization, I would like to welcome the new members, and I want to thank those who are returning. We appreciate your service for the students and staff and parents of Wycomico County. First, I wanted to let you know that our posters have been distributed through the schools and the buildings informing the staff of our organization in hopes that upon retirement they will be joining our organization. I also want to share with you that our state organization, Maryland Retired School Personnel Association, awards two $300 minute grants to each area, to the teachers who have projects either for their classroom, for the school, or for the county. And there were 98 applicants this year. And I'm happy, I am excited to announce that both awards are going to be given to our students in Wycomico County. At this point, the details will follow, but I wanted to at least share that much, we're waiting for everything to be finalized. So when that's all finalized, then I'll be reporting, but I'm really excited. In the past, Lisa McKinnon and Stephanie Rush have been awarded. So in the four years that the program has been instituted, we have had recipients, we have had four recipients, so I'm tickled for that. In other news, MRSPA awards two, no, three $2,000 scholarships to those staff members that are pursuing certification or the teachers that are pursuing a specialized area. And the application period is January 3rd through January 31st. So I encourage anyone who is interested in either one of those opportunities to please check into the information. I'm sure it's available at this point. And last year, we were fortunate that Nathan Hooper at Parkside.
30 seconds.
Received one of them. So I'm tickled for that. And so keep your fingers crossed that we'll have another recipient awarded. And I'm happy that the Wycomico County teachers have had the opportunities to benefit from these opportunities. So I wish much success to the new board members and to those returning in your endeavors this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Lee. Topic is financial literacy. Good afternoon.
Dr. Shoffler, members of the Board, and particularly to you, the new members. For those who may not know, I'm Edward Lee. I'm Edward Lee. I'm here today representing the T. Seminole Fish Financial Literacy Ad Hoc Committee. I'm going to share with you today a resolution, it's a two-part resolution. It's a resolution from the Maryland State Conference of the NAACP. Maryland State Conference, NAACP, a call to action, financial literacy, dated October 21st, 2022. I'm only going to read a portion of this and the conclusion. You have it before you, and then make a recommendation. Whereas, or request, whereas students graduating from Maryland, Maryland's high schools are underprepared to manage their financial affairs required to survive in our capitalistic society, the overwhelming majority of the graduating students impacted are African-American students and students of color. They graduate and enter a world of predatory lending, credit card competition and competitors, car salespersons, loan sharks, and student loan debt. This failure to educate our children lays at the doorstep of the public school system. And whereas this resolution reaffirms the 2020 NAACP Financial Literacy Equity Gap Training in Schools Resolution, which advocates at the federal, state, and local levels to create financial literacy programs aimed to support and promote the positive impacts the positive impacts of financial literacy training for African-American children in K-12 American schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Maryland State Conference of the NAACP will support local units' efforts to install measurable and accountable, and it is underscored, measurable and accountable financial literacy reform in school programs as needed, dated October 17th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I would again recommend and offer to the board to meet with you to discuss this matter of financial literacy. It is ongoing. It is a state, it is a national issue that is undertaken by the NAACP. While I don't represent them or speak for them here, it's been undertaken, and now it's been undertaken by the state of Maryland. I encourage you not to try to solve this on your own behind closed doors, talking to the same people. We are available to have that discussion with you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joe Venosa. New Year Priorities is the topic.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody here and at home. How you doing? I feel like you guys should have an espresso machine. I mean, luckily, I'm good. Well, first off, congratulations to the new and old board members, meaning those returning and those that are new, as well as to the election of Mr. Malone and Mr. Brown. I'd like to first give a shout out to the teachers, staff, and parents at Pinehurst Elementary for doing an incredible job last week with the Scholastic Book Sale. We had an incredible team run by Ms. Ashley Plots. You may have heard of her. Who did a phenomenal job coordinating the activities and really brought in a tremendous amount of other community members to make it a success. I've always believed that as a parent, from and of a child in the public schools, that that engagement that we speak of, that need to communicate, is a two-way street. And parents that are most proactive and interested will help facilitate those relationships. Also, being that it was brought up by some previous speakers, as the parent of an autistic child, I can say I've had nothing but tremendous gratitude and appreciation for the staff and teachers who have gone above and beyond for both my child and others. One of the most important things that having special needs and prioritizing them in the schools is that it doesn't only allow them to be included, but you're teaching empathy, understanding toward others. Nothing is more heartening than watching six- and seven-year-old kids hug somebody and not having to worry about what they look like or if they're neurotypical or not. So that's an important thing that I think people on the board should remember because election season is over. The job is now to do the job. We have some tremendous challenges and some amazing possibilities. One of the things that continues to be an issue is the teacher shortage, both regarding full-time and even substitute. One of the things that we've stressed about as a Salisbury University teacher is to encourage our students to become subs. This has been a challenge, though, however, because the continuing issue that comes up is the low pay for that rate. As Mr. Lee said, we live in a capitalistic society. I believe we should apply market forces to this and make those wages competitive for all to help alleviate that. Regarding issues of bullying and concerns that were brought up by both the previous student, I believe it was Ms. Matthews from Mardella. And this is also for both Cara and Daphne. You may want to reach out directly to an important official whose name you should know that is now going to be a big factor in educational policy. His name is Richard H. Warren. He is on Governor-elect Westmore's Educational Executive Policy Committee. He's the guy who you need to call because apart from being a Somerset County native and Teacher of the Year in 2019, he's our direct line to Annapolis. It's been a long eight years, and now we're going to have a new administration that's going to prioritize public education in a major way. And we have people from this community, grow our own, who have that connection. If you have issues with bullying, harassment, those are the people you need to contact.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darren Lombardo, and the topic is educational issues.
Good afternoon, board. Welcome, everybody. We are entering into a new year, 2023. And this new year should be an awesome year. And so I wanted to come here and welcome you and encourage you in some areas. Parent involvement and transparency, those are two big issues for 2023. And in that, I know through a lot of your campaigns, you have expressed the majority here a disapproval of the new public comment protocol policy, which was written after parents have expressed before the board what was going on in the school. So it is obvious why that was written. It was written to obstruct the citizen. So I would ask you to revisit that in the days ahead and look at that to make sure that we have representation and a voice without restrictions. As it relates to the agenda here today and the past board meetings, we have a motion to approve consent items. Usually, we just blast through these. The citizens have no idea what you're talking about. They have no idea what went on in the past or what you're voting on. But I would encourage you, when you hit a consent item, to just, in a couple of sentences, two or three sentences, to say, hey, this is about this. You know, we discussed this, and today we're going to vote on it. Just so that people are informed and know what's going on, that's all. It's real simple. As far as during campaigns also, the majority of you agreed that we should have quarterly town hall meetings to have interactions with the citizens. I think that's a great idea, and I think that's a good way to build up that relationship with the community. I wanted to make a quick comment, and I have a minute left, about an agenda item that was discussed today, which Mr. Briggs brought up. And that is pre-K. When we went through those slides, there was an area where it talked about making sure that students that are accepted into the program is based on income eligibility. And then four-year-olds are on a sliding scale. I just want to make sure that when we address pre-K, that, you know, we hear the word equity all the time. We want to make sure we have equal access for all students, regardless of anything. And when we look at students based on their income or what their family's income is, we create a discrimination. We don't want to discriminate based on income. So I just want to encourage you. We have good intentions when we bring these things forward. We need to make sure that we apply that without partiality. So that's all I ask, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. That concludes public comment. We appreciate all the comments. And as usual, if there's items that we can post to the board website and answering some of these questions, we will. There'll also be follow-up where it's appropriate. So again, thank you for being here and issuing your public comments to the board. So the final item is 8.1 Board Member Reports, where most of you know that's time for the board members to report on their activities and make comments. I'm going to not put Mrs. Beecham on the spot first to the left. Since she's new, I'm going to put Mr. Palmer on the spot to my right, and we'll work this way. So, Mr. Palmer, you're up.
On the spot again, huh?
On the spot again.
Thanks, Gene. I just want to welcome the new board members and the new positions for Mr. Brown. Look forward to working with all of you in the future. I want to encourage parents to get involved in your schools. We really need input from you in order to help make decisions. There's a lot going on, and your input is very important. New board members, when you go in these Christmas parades and all, it can be very cold, so dress warmly. And I just want to wish you Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mrs. Hazel?
I just want to thank all the citizens that voted for me to get me up here. I plan on speaking up for the parents and being transparent about the changes that are made so everyone knows what's going on. And I'm very excited to represent you and help make some positive changes in this county.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazel. Mr. Brown?
Just want to say, first of all, thanks to all the individuals who voted for me in terms of getting reelected and also to become the vice chair for the Board of Ed. I just really appreciate it, and I'll do my best to serve you as best I can. Secondly, I had an opportunity, again, this year as a member of the Rotary Club, to go into the elementary schools that have third grade. We're giving them out dictionaries. And I know oftentimes you might hear, well, is that still relevant? Well, if you would go to one of those schools and see the reaction of those students when they receive that dictionary, it's really awesome. It's not only a dictionary that has words and meanings and things of that nature, but in the back of it, it has things that they're really interested in, like stars and planets. And the one that they're really intrigued about, two things. First of all, it shows them how to use sign language. And I tell them when a teacher says, no more talking, and they've got the last thing they want to say to their friend, they can sign. And you can see them beginning to do that. And the last thing in that book that they really, really love is the longest word in the English language, just one whole page. And I challenge them, so when I come back next year to give out to the third graders, I'm going to go to the fourth grade classes and see if anybody can pronounce that word. But they really enjoy it. So we're going to continue to do that. I had an opportunity. I've gone to West Side Intermediate, Northwestern, Delmar, St. Francis, Wycomico Desco, and Step and Stones. And I'm going to hit one tomorrow and another one on Thursday and Friday. We'll get to all of them eventually. So they're enjoying those books, and we're happy to do that. It's two other Rotary Clubs in Wycomico County participate in that. Wycomico Rotary Club, which meets at breakfast, and the club that I'm in, Salisbury Rotary Club, that meet in the evening. I also read in the newspaper that 19 students from Parkside High School, I think you mentioned that, had an opportunity to participate in a program at Salisbury University, which helped to do with literacy. And they want to expand that program. And I'm glad to hear that because it gives them an opportunity to look at investments and stocks and bonds and things like that. And I'm hoping that they will expand that so they will be able to include more students than what they are now reaching. The other thing that interested me is that I always love to hear the kids, what they're doing in the schools. Again, four different high schools, and you will not think they're all in the same county because they're all doing some things that are so very different, so very creative. And it just goes to show that we're developing well-rounded students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Beecham?
First, I want to thank all the citizens of Wycomico County for electing me to the board. I am extremely grateful and thankful. I had huge support in District 3, where I got 65% of the vote, which is amazing and overwhelming, actually. I'm very grateful. But I thank all of the citizens of the county for their support and encouragement. I don't take the position lightly. It's the people of Wycomico County that elected me, and that's who I represent. That's who I'm here to serve, and I pray I serve them well. Please feel free to call me or email me anytime. And to the board, I look forward to working with all of you over the next four years. And I know that every board member up here cares about the teachers and the students in Wycomico County Public Schools. So I know working together, we can make change. And congratulations, Mr. Malone and Mr. Brown, on your election. And I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Plots?
Like the others, I'd like to thank the voters who elected me. And I'd like to thank Dr. Stalfer and his staff, who have had a great onboarding process for us. I was able to attend Pinehurst Parent Advisory Committee meeting as a parent and listen to the parents directly, which they had good feedback on some of the changes that have occurred recently. As a parent, I was also able to attend Bennett Metal's seventh and eighth grade band concert. And I look forward to other concerts this week. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Plots. Dr. Anis?
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I want to echo the other board members' comments and thank the citizens of Wycomico County for putting us in this spot and to thank you for your support. And I sincerely hope that I live up to the expectations. It is my goal to continue my push for full transparency of student data, both academic and, most important right now, student behavior data. We need to dig deep with our community partners and find a way to support our teachers, support our students, and support our families in Wycomico County. Our academic achievement scores will not increase until we take a closer look at what's going on with student behavior in our schools. That's my goal. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. So since the last board meeting, I attended a chamber lunch. I represent the chamber for the bank that I work for and for the board. Boy Scout Breakfast, which was outstanding. The Board of Ed had a table there. I was there with our bank. The Economic Forum or Summit Seminar, whatever you call it, SU, a couple of weeks ago on Friday, was a very good event. It gets you a lot of information on the local economy. And then I attended the United Way Gala at the Hyatt in Cambridge a couple of weeks ago, which is always a great event. Like everyone else, I'm appreciative of being reelected and most appreciative to my colleagues reelecting me as chairman. All of us had, I know all seven of us had a goal and had a platform of parental involvement. One of the places I think we need to start in 2023 is looking at PTAs. We have 24 schools, and 15 of them don't have PTAs. That's 63% of our schools don't have PTA. Is it because our administration isn't pushing, or is it because parents won't get involved? One particular school I know for a fact, the parents, no one, they had a meeting to organize PTA, and no parent would step up to be on the board, so there's no PTA. So there's a place to start for parental involvement, and then we move forward from there. I know it's cliche to say we're blessed to live in a community where the folks sitting up here are elected by the citizens. This applies, of course, to the state, the county, and all other officers in the nation. We all take our oaths of office seriously, as everyone has said, and appreciate being elected to serve this community. My commitment today is for us all to do the very best we can for all the students, citizens, staff in this county. And I know all seven of us will work together as a team to do that. So I say to the students, staff, and members of the Wycomico County Public School System and the community, take some time over the holiday. Please enjoy time with your families. But think about, when we come back in 2023, what we can do to make Wycomico County Public Schools better and make it the best school system in the state of Maryland. So with that, I say happy holidays to all. Drive safely home, and we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for attending.